August the 25th, 2014, Monicas City Council Meeting. Barge, will you please lead us in prayer?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, as we come before you today, we want to thank you, Lord, for another day you've given us. God, we ask for your guidance. Lord, lead us, Lord, and show us what it is we need to do that we can better the city, Lord. We thank you again for everything you've done for us, God. We ask you to watch over and guide us for us, and Jesus precious, holding in, we pray.
Amen.
Mary, would you like to say something?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start getting to the bottom. The approval of minutes from July the 28th, do you have this recording?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a question, so have any discussion?
Second.
Harry, are you still looking here? You're still, you okay?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Alright, we'll start out with reports. Police Department report. Do you want any questions for the chief?
Just one thing, when we get a chance, not tonight by any means, but sometime in the very near future, I have not personally had the opportunity to meet face-to-face all of our new officers.
Okay.
I run into them here and there and introduce myself, and they have done the same. Whenever we get a spare fifteen minutes, some given times, I'd just like to see them all at one time, so we know who the players are.
Sure, no problem.
Do you mind if at the next meeting, because we'll be looking at Jack and the chiefs and the training officer, we just have them all here at the next meeting?
Sure.
If that's okay?
That'd be great.
So in that way, everybody can meet them, because I didn't, I never met them, I'm on duty just one-on-one. Is that okay with y'all?
Absolutely.
We just have them all here for a few minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, because everybody's done the same thing. We've been in the street and other places, which is, they're out working. And, uh, thank you.
I've met them all, and I think we have a real nice group.
But I mean, to have them all here, so everybody can meet them.
As long as it don't conflict like your one pin cord all ends up working at night or something, and I just, a couple of birds will find out, because I think, I mean, I've met them all, but I know everybody else here at.
And I've met one of them, I think, but in different places.
Yeah, I've met all of them.
But, uh, and we do appreciate it, and of course, we do need to, at that next meeting, look at both the chief and the training officer's sixty days, or the days we said, if they would get a raise for that, too.
Sure.
So, um, and one of the things, uh, after the council has done some of the stuff they're gonna do, we'll get everybody together and then just sit down and see what's going on, what you need, and all that good stuff with the council, and, uh, so have you got anything to comment or complain?
I appreciate the hard work they've done. We had Arden robbery two hours ago, within about twenty-five, thirty minutes, both parties were in custody, did the fast work for our dispatch and officers on the scene, thanks to, just working together, basically got it done, and county was set up on interstate, had them shut down. I'd say around twenty minutes after the armed robbery, they were both in custody.
You had the state that worked with you, or if you got.
Yeah, highway patrol, highway patrol up to some interstate, it set up everything, went in and played pretty quick, and we got it out, description on the air, and nobody was hurt, neither party, our officers or the suspect was injured, and everybody was taken. And I really appreciate the work they did in that.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you and the police department and the fire department with that accident, even though it wasn't ours. Uh, last week, whenever you came in, there was white paint vehicles involved, and there was people, there was a rainstorm, it was a really bad storm, and everybody went and worked together, and that's what it's about, because I know you came in to work at, you know, it was actually started running, who, I was at nine-one-one with the.
Jack was on scene and I come on after.
And the fire department was there, and thank y'all for doing that, even though it wasn't, it's about people, no corporate.
Okay.
So, anyone else got anything else for the chief?
No.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Fire Department, I think, Harry, Jeremy got something? And thank you for being here, Jeremy.
Uh, before we just start, I think things got changing here, activity, but, uh, what I'd like to bring up is, uh, we're trying to build the fire department back, Jeremy's in jail, and we're really happy, we've got some new members, and we've got some that I think's gonna stay with us, because that's the first person I had. Some of them got turnout gear, I think, turned around in three times, that whole suit, and some of them were ragged, I mean, they need some turnout gear. Turnout gear is very expensive, and I had a meeting with Jeremy Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever it was, and the gentleman right there had some turnout gear, that he really had, I feel like's a good deal on, because what he priced the whole suit for is about what the pants and jacket cost, and this includes the no max hood, the boots, and the turnout gear.
Gloves and spindles.
Gloves, spindles, everything, a whole suit, and they're around eighteen, nineteen-hundred dollars a set. What I'm asking the council now, and I've already talked to Mary about it, is we've ordered like six sets, they're on hold right now, we vote tonight, uh, now, and we'll go with the rest of them next year, just kind of hagging it out. They do have their names on them, which I like, because if a man's got an air pack on, you don't know who you're hollering at. The name's on the back of them, but it is detachable, so we can use them for somebody else. Uh, the reason they're a little cheaper is, is because they're a year old. Uh, there's ten years you can wear them, these only have nine years. And, uh, I don't think that one year's gonna make that much difference, the difference in the price. And, uh, I'm asking the council if, uh, Jeremy, well, we've already ordered them, he's already sized them, but now it's on hold right now until we decide now, but they gotta know, because it's gonna be three months before we get them, or two and a half months or something.
Six times two?
Eighteen, nineteen-hundred.
No, we said two thousand times six is what we said today to make sure, and they usually are around four thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah.
And you said you have nine years warranty on them, and Harry, of course, being involved with the fire and stuff, talked with the gentleman as well, Jeremy said he feels comfortable with it, we would be saving about two thousand dollars per gear, if you want to say stat, and we have nine years on it.
Well, the right one walks in, catches them, wire them, Jeremy's, I think, goes out in a year, Jay's goes out in a year, so they just got ten years on them, so they have, when you buy them. And I'm not gonna say anybody's gonna catch us, but I'm just saying if they did, and, and I'd like for them to have something to fit them, this guy fit them to these uniform, these.
Those twelve thousand?
Let me ask this, as they age, once they hit that ten-year mark, are they less likely to provide the protection that you think is necessary?
No, no. No, that's not it, it's just like OSHA, if somebody comes in, they're out of date, like, just like buying a bag of potato chips, I used to put it free away, they're still good after it went out of date, but there's out of date, and you have to use them, and that's more or less what it is, but, okay. And this, you know, it's hard, and it's like, I want to talk to them, they're asking, are you gonna stay with us? And I think all the farmers there right now are, uh, that's a concern, because then the next man comes in, and it's gonna feed him, the other guys left. Now, we're gonna have some other suits there, it's not gonna be that, that's all we're gonna have, but this, I think, will start us for at least this year, and then maybe next year, we can do the rest of them, and you know, have everybody in uniform.
What's the dollar figure, Harry?
It's about nineteen-hundred dollars a set.
And how many sets are we talking?
Six.
It'd be about twelve thousand, Rusty, if we don't exceed that amount with everything, if you round it up for them, so instead of.
But, I mean, they gotta have them, and they gotta fit them, that's, that's.
But if you've got somebody working efficiently, it does, but I mean, you know, I'm not gonna tell you, we can't do without them, I'm not gonna commence to tell you that, I mean, I'd do that if my home ain't, and I'd like one, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, it's, I think it's something in need, and I'm just trying to pass on to y'all, so you can charge a penny.
Harry, I'll toss you some baloney, buddy.
I bet a real buck.
To, to go back, you know, and which is wrong, and, but we're actually now getting money from fire department, from fires, we don't have the budget before, see if we have to amend it, this is a need we're in, and we send them out there, and they're volunteers. So I'm just saying that as is the input, but do y'all have a motion? It'd be about twelve thousand dollars, what Harry's recommending.
I'll make the motion that we, we approve this purchase. Um, I, I don't want a fireman out there in an outfit that doesn't fit him properly trying to fight a fire.
And I'll tell you right now, as long as it's been since they started this fire department open, I've been there, done this, I'm proud of him, I'm proud of Jay, I'm proud of Russell even, uh, he's come into this fire department with experience on his belt and taken to death. He awesome as I drive a truck.
Can we have, do we have a second, we have a second? And all in favor?
Uh, uh.
Opposed? Yeah, we're glad to get them and get them ready.
All right. That's, that's good, I just.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, we appreciate it, and thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Russell, for coming aboard, you're also with the forestry, and he is also soon gonna be a certified trainer with his other job, so, and, uh, thank you, Jay, for all you've been doing, and, for, working towards and with us, and just being part of that team.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Now, planning commission and results.
I have nothing for.
Okay, Earl does have a report in here, as you know, our codes enforcement officer, or we'll just make this announcement, will be accessible, but he is having knee replacement, he wants everything to go through him, as it always has, and he has certified people to work with it. There are issues, and of course, we've talked about signage downtown, ordinance and other things, Harry, he does have a note in here, he turned over some of that to the city attorney that you mentioned, and that is now in Harvey's hands, on those signs to be removed, as well as he will be addressing anything we need through the office and Emmett Scan to him, consenting, and if he'll notify us via email.
I'm just curious, because we got some signs that totally equal bid on this.
Well, he gave it to, on eight-twenty-eight, um, he has a note in here, it will be definitely in court, that one you asked about, and I mean, this is public record, but it's a sign, you know that it'll be definitely.
Let me, let me ask you a question, if Mr. Cottrell is no longer the owner of the business, has anybody applied for a business permit to take it over?
But that, no, well, the brother owns it, but the, the thing that Harry was talking about, the sign cannot be here under our ordinance, that way.
It advertises something at the river, is what it is, it can't be in, see, I'm sorry, say it again? It, it, the sign is in the city limits of Maale, and he's advertising a business that's over Tennessee River.
Right.
And he can't be in one, it's illegal, and I've been told that three months ago by Earl, but they're still there, he's not even trying to take it down, he's lying there all three or four times, but.
Well, let me ask you, did I want to use the word lie? What are the ramifications for the city taking the sign down and sending a bill?
Well, if you look at this, they've taken it to court, there's a note in here that Earl's has it now in Harvey's hands, and that'll be going to court.
I was already gonna do that, we can do it.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, that might get us in trouble with our ordinance.
Yeah, I was gonna do it, cool.
So, so Earl's got it, you have a report there, Rusty?
I see.
Okay. And, uh, so did Alvin, Rusty, have anything?
No.
Okay. Um, we'll go to utility manager, public works, Mr. Gallagher, I think there's three items here, you've got.
There's David Ford, Terry Austin.
All right. Well, we got your person, so we'll.
Draw them up.
Okay. All right, so.
Okay, first of all, on the excavator, folks have the goods.
All right, we have, at the last meeting, you had discussed wanting the excavator, is that correct? Is this correct, John, you have three different ones, which one are you recommending here? Two or four? There's four in here?
I got a call about one bid today, did Debbie, did that gentleman get his bid into you?
He did not.
He did not, okay. That would be number three, John, the cat?
Okay, is this one for the, this one for the one you want?
Yeah.
That'd be two, right? Okay. Fifteen, yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's a long bid.
Yeah, this is the lowest bid, if you look at them, you have four, four bids down, which is correct, this, this company did bring the, uh, equipment up here for us to utilize it and use it for a while, uh, it was advertised in the paper, correct? So, if you look, and it's something that our utility director feels like we need, and so the cost would be fifteen thousand is the bid, but, um, he's recommended, Greg, Don?
Yeah, I see, so thank you, be a big help, and I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
All right, do we want to vote, Rock, Card, or we want to, might as well, man? Rusty?
Uh.
Alvin?
Yes.
Lex?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, the next thing is, of course, Lex is, he's not perfect, he's out here for the board, under the road, right here, on the town, he still hadn't heard nothing back yet.
Did you get that email, that letter, or whatever it was?
I talked to Steve Langford, I called him, talked to him, and he was gonna get back on it, I just hadn't heard nothing back yet. And also, I got with Anthony about, we're gonna try to replace the two-inch line Carl called that one, Miss Davenport, we're gonna try to get a permit at the same time to replace that two-inch line from Wales Road out to Miss Davenport, because it's, uh, this old cast iron line, it's full of holes, it's full of rust, you got a problem with it, no pressure, it's nasty, so.
Do the boulder and fix that all at the same time?
Yeah, we're gonna try, well, we should do it later, 'cause if it works out, I'll be on the right-hand side of the road where the old line is, we'll just put it the same, dig it up, put the same ditch where the old line is, maybe have, uh, four taps, I think, to go back in.
Did, did the gentleman give you any positive signs when he called you back as to when he may bless us, or allow us to move forward?
Well, now, that Steve, this Mr. Thompson, Steve that I talked to, said he hadn't even seen nothing.
Remember last week, you had to see the permit to go on?
Said he hadn't seen nothing, so I have him faxed what had been sent to this Mr. Thompson.
Yeah.
And then, I think this Mr. Thompson, when Anthony was up here the other day, he had called Anthony, and Anthony told me, he said, I don't know who you talked to or wherever, you got somebody on the ball, because they told me we'd have, you'd have a permit couple of days, but I ain't seen nothing.
Well, and it works as far as.
Right, right. Anyway, that's what we're at on that, and I don't know if I've talked to you about this or not, I've mentioned to a couple of them here, and a couple of them, I can't remember if I mentioned you, but anyway, we've been discussing about, out of the water plant.
Yeah, you've told us.
Trying to get a generator, and I'm get, supposed to get a couple of quotes on it, one man was supposed to done something, one, I hadn't received it yet, and I've got another guy, he's working.
He got just some high-pressure work, right?
Well, just whatever, I told, I think it's gonna be a sixty kilowatt, I believe it is, to work the pumps and different, uh, chemical pump, they.
Just keep us online.
To keep you online, yeah.
That's how, you'd mentioned one time, and when she brought that up.
Right.
Remember that plant that Mr. Lee talked to us about, did we, or for the generator on that, it basically went down?
No.
That's something else that we, you mentioned to.
Well, I've got one down there at the oil plant that we need, I need to get checked on, it's, uh, I don't think it's got been eight hours on since nineteen ninety-one, but I don't know if it'll run that pump station, if it will, me and Lex talked about this a long time ago, we can mount it on a trailer, use propane, if the power went up, we'll hook it up, because we got the plugs there, when they built it, put it in, remember the plug there, hold it.
And I remember when it was being built, you talked to him, Mr. Blue did, and we said we pursue it, and it sort of got lost, since you're talking generators now, you can, you remember that plant down, the one in John's house, and if it went off, it could back up to the grid, and that could be stopped.
Yeah, down south side of the, the overflow, you know, the program is off.
Because we know generators have and backup systems.
Well, you know, it's back in the eighties, eighty-eight or something, we had that ice storm, you know, we had to get National Water Brink up there, and, uh, like, you're better.
I hope we don't ever need one.
Well, I hope we don't need, but still, if you run out of your old.
You gotta get rid of that one. Well, I mean, once, if, if, if we have to purchase one, once we have it, once we take care of it.
Right.
If it's needed somewhere else, it could actually be moved, as long as it's, it's fixed where it can. Then at the water plant, it'll be stationary.
Yeah, it'd be stationary.
Yeah, it'd be stationary.
I see, okay. So are you looking, are you looking for a propane model, or are you looking for a, a, a diesel, like an Onan?
Propane.
Propane.
Yeah, I thought about that, too, 'cause if you get diesel, you got so much trouble with it, jelling and all this stuff.
In the winter, right.
Sets a long time, just, you know, you kick on, exercise a little bit, and that's about it, you know, we got one down there, we have to keep watching, we have to keep the, stuff, and keep jelling.
You're right, the propane won't do that, that's true.
Right, 'cause we got a propane tank out there, and then we got a five, I think it's a five-hundred gallon propane tank, that's old plant that's just set, because it's been discontinued, so there won't be no problem with propane, doesn't wanna make really propane.
Okay.
So I think it'd be better.
Makes good sense.
Yeah, and that worries about the diesel, all that, that's just my opinion, only have up there.
Have you looked, have you looked into a price, or are you still talking about possibly moving the one?
Well, now, well, that, now that one there, Rusty, down there is a small one, it's just for a pump station.
I see.
If it's even big enough to run in.
Gotcha.
Uh, I just need to get a sixty kilowatt on it, check it down there at the pump station, see what amperage, and see what's gonna happen, to see if it'll run, if it'll run, if we can mount it on a trailer, you know, it's got a, a six-on-four engine, but I don't know what the amperage, the kilowatt dollar, I'm worried.
Have you looked into the cost of what you're looking for?
Uh, yeah, yeah, doing that now.
Okay.
I just wanted to advise everybody that I was in the process of trying to get some pricing and stuff.
Okay. Well, that's a must, I have to say, I agree.
Well, I mean, I think it'd be a good thing, you know, 'cause if your power goes out after three days.
You're in trouble, people in.
Well, it's after the day to flow, I don't want you getting hot.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
And what we can do is, just like we did with, you know, equipment committee, if you get the prices, can just exceed the amount that we can go and write in the paper, and then that way, we'll have met that before the next meeting, and that's all right, then if anybody sees it in the paper, it's because he's already broke before attention, and we can decide what we're gonna buy at the next meeting, that's all right. So it saves some time for us, you know, and we're complying with the law, is that okay?
It's good, man.
All right, another thing up there, I think he was involved in this last year, of course, Carl mentioned it the other day, and we mentioned a couple of them, but anyway, winter's coming on in the shed on the side of the, our building, I don't even know, where are we at on that?
Uh, in the office in there, in a file, and I'm not sure where it is, but I'm looking for it, we did do an estimate based on Carl's guesstimate of time and labor and material, and then we contacted one of the Mennonites, had them come up here, took them over there, and got a price from them, and if my memory serves me correctly, the price from the Mennonites was considerably cheaper than us trying to do it ourselves, and plus, we didn't have the time to do it, but there is a quote, which is probably fifteen, eighteen months old now, we can find it, but it's in there somewhere.
Do you think we'll come, take this, get it, have him come down and do it again?
I don't know why not, I mean, it didn't take him, but.
Is it, I mean.
He said he could be out.
I guess, has it been budgeted for yet? Has it been budgeted for?
It was in budget, it was in the budget at one time, yeah.
What we'll have to do, John, I think it exceeded the amount, if I'm not mistaken, 'cause you have the electrical in there, too, then, is it will have to get three bids, because it does exceed the amount, doesn't it, Dan?
I'll plan it for you, it's in there.
And we can, we can run the bids, on up the pole barn you want, and on the lights, 'cause the lights were included in the shop, too, when they got.
Yeah.
And so we need to get that, 'cause it exceeded.
Well, we need really for wear and all, we need to get that bucket trip under it, you know, just that.
That's what I said about getting that, it's like, you call it a pole barn, it's like a shed out from the side.
Is it all right to run that, too, you know, and to write it in the papers, that we're looking for these, and that way we can approve it, once you get the bid.
Get it done.
Is that okay, Harry?
Yeah.
See, me and Lex, me and Lex has talked about this, and this was a couple of years ago, a year and a half, two years ago, down there at the old plant, where we tore it down, that big concrete slab, in time to come, not right now, that'd make a great place for a pole barn, certain height under, different pieces of equipment, 'cause you got your slab there.
And you gotta come over, send it back.
That's right, that's right, you know.
I agree with your point, or Ben.
Just, you know, it's a time thing, you don't have to, you know.
I don't like that, man.
Oh, hell, I don't either. Uh, and I think, I think she said you were gonna ring in here.
Momma asked you about it, is that okay? All right, another thing that, of course, John, because Lex and, and Harry started with the meeting today, we didn't get done till one o'clock, it ended up being five hours that we were meeting, but one of the things that he brought up today is that we have increased our labor, and that, John, as being utility director slash public works, working with everyone, you get another title without a raise, so.
Every week, you get a new title.
But, uh, and I'm gonna go, let John explain why, but that we need to transfer an employee that we have now from a part-time position to a full-time, so it's still complying with all of our policy, but so, John, you can sort of explain why, and the, the person and their certification and.
Well, they, he's got CDLs, and he can operate equipment, he can operate backhoe, he can operate the little trencher, operate the track hoe, I've seen, he ain't afraid to work, I've seen that.
That's a plus.
That whole body, he'll bail right there and get just dirty as you did, and, uh, I don't know, I was thinking it'd be a, a good thing, go ahead and put him on full-time, because I've asked Carl about this, of course, this is a winter time project, when the weather gets bad, of course, everybody here knows that things slow down, and when it slows down, I'd like to take him, and I've asked him that, I'd like to take him to the syrup plant, me and Jerome, and train him some in the lab, so, like, last Monday, when, of course, Jerome had to take the day off, or he was gonna lose it, he's got four, he's gonna lose it, anyways, off last Monday, that's when the lightning storm hit, and all this had, it pushed me to get what I need done, and sure, what I got done, but if you had somebody that could fall in there and fill in for a day, you see what I'm saying? Just a day, or two days, you know, and that's what I kinda.
The rest of it, where's you gonna be with shop?
On shop, yeah, yeah.
You're making this recommendation?
Well, I will tell you, I will tell you this, Alvin, you're not up here as much to see it, but I'm gonna tell you what I've seen out of him, he don't care to work.
No, he don't.
I've seen that, sir.
John, and then Henry, he's right out, this is, he's been working for us for a while, and, uh, so he wanted to transfer him to full-time, because we need him, and from mowing grass to driving equipment, to whatever needs to be done, as well as training, of course, that'd be the benefits, and he said it's starting at ten dollars an hour, but I was licensed.
Right.
So it would just be a transfer.
Oh, here's Randall now, go, thank you, brother, thank you.
Well, we're gonna go meet him then.
All right, you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Uh, thank y'all, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
John, before you, yeah, since you, since you, public works, you talked about your group, and you said you would look at it, and I know you mentioned the membrane and the materials, so can you give us an update on?
Well, I was gonna ask, Burg, who had a hang more trouble since Randall had put that rubber.
I don't see any water in the floor.
Yeah.
I'm at the fire hall.
It's flooded, bad.
It flooded the top one?
Yeah, the lower back.
Well, I don't think they went over.
They did, we only went to the nine-one-one. We didn't, we didn't know to go down there that time.
All right. Let me explain something. Down in his bottom building, we got part of it fixed, 'cause we put a cutter down inside the building. It was running under the block or in the front door. Now, what we have to do, and I've not mentioned to you yet, I'm going to, but he can come down the side of the fire hall with that little trencher and dig him a ditch. Because the water's running off the hill from the place parking, and what ain't going in the side doors going onto the floor, and when it rains like it did the other day, you go swimming in there.
The same was bad there. We got our cascade system, stuff that sits in the back of the floor back there for air packs and stuff. You don't feel them.
Well, it's not a big thing, 'cause the roof is leaking. It's going under the floor.
Now, the upper hall is leaking.
It's covered down there.
Yeah, but they, they put it on that.
Yeah, so it's leaking tremendously bad.
Okay.
Lex looked at it the other day up there, and back, in the very back by the storeroom, it, the ceiling's been starting to swag in it, and then the, the office part over the computer is, uh, something, the ceiling tile.
You see Randall put this roof coat up on, over there, on, before he was late, now we're gonna look at it. That one, we did say it's a good roof coat.
Well, that's what we need to do.
Rubber coat stuff.
He's in on basic job, isn't he?
What I'd have done different, where the, where you got your cracks up there, you know, you can see the cracks, and I'd have put a, a roofing cement, and then put a membrane, then put a roofing cement. Then I would put that rubber roof coat over, and see if it was all...
Wouldn't you make the do it?
So now that you got, and one of the things back to, and we talked about it, and I know you didn't come up with a hard quote, but you said about ten thousand dollars versus twenty-five, but it could fix this if we was there.
Yeah, I figured that out.
And I know, it's been a while.
Footage and all that, that's what it's called.
With, and if we, we need to get somebody to help us for a while, do you think we could get this done? If we have a number by September, September, October, if we got our quotes?
But, but from what I'm hearing, it sounds like there's some structural repair that's gonna have to be done before you do that. If the roof is actually swaging, I mean...
Oh, he's talking about the cell tape.
No, the, now, actually, in where engine one says two sixty-five, back in the bay.
Well, you said over the computer, and that's...
Yes, it's leaking, it's leaking over the computer, plus out in the bay where the engine says.
Out in the bay, Jeremy, you said that press?
He said the, the ceiling tape is swagging there. Well, when I heard it, it was swagging over the computer and that cell tape, so I was in there looking at it, because I didn't know, I didn't know anything about that.
The other part he's talking about is that that press was overheated. Of course, if it leaks, it's gonna lay on the press, so there's probably nothing wrong with it.
Well, let me ask you this. If, if it's like, if it's swagging like that, can you still put the roof on?
Oh, yeah, it's not structural, it's not, it's flat.
It's the tile that went.
That's a false seat. He put that false seat in the roof.
That's what I, I didn't think it's in an instructional.
No, it's, it's just a blob with the swag in it. It's kind, it's just kind of circles that's running down the lots and, you know, watery, so, I mean...
Yes, it's good when your, when your lights light up.
The thing is, I don't know, I don't know if I'm gonna go for a heck and all that, but, and I've got some, we'll need ropes and safety belt, 'cause one foot on that roof, and we got a boat truss, and you're done.
All right, you're working it?
I've got two or three there, and we may have one or two in the shop, I ain't sure.
Can you, can you patch this, and can we have a rig pass before then? We'll have to bid this one out, too, to do, you know, Ron, because can we...
Why would you have to bid it out? You wouldn't in that.
If we do it with materials? We don't have to?
We do it in town, so there's no question.
Yeah, I'm just going back to, okay. All right, so is it okay for you to bring us to the house to fix the permits, or are we following up? I'm just, I'm just making sure the auditors are happy, people. That's what we try to do, right here.
Amen.
And, uh, so to go ahead and fix our rigs, if, if you need somebody else to help, you can let us know part-time.
Call him if he needs a mint, maybe.
Well, get the safety belts, and I don't know how much we'll help, but we'll get somebody can work. You get the full-time batteries.
Jumping.
Lex has a question here.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to bring this back to you. This is after we split, two o'clock or whatever, finally. All right, I, I explained it to Carl. I called Carl, couldn't get him. Carl came up Steve Hall. He and I visited for probably fifteen minutes, kind of caught John when he came back in around four. Make the long story short, the surveyor, Tom, Tom Moore, he took me out there, right in the corner here, to show me where he would be if we dropped a conduit in, the wiring, the pad, the template, all of that kind of stuff.
Mm-huh.
And if we come out like we're supposed to, he's gonna be hitting the fence.
Okay.
And he's a little concerned about the conduits. He doesn't believe it has to be eighteen inches deep, it doesn't have to be...
Well, Les don't make it, does he?
And then he wanted to know if we had an electrician, and I said, well, we can get one, but right now we don't have an electrician, electrician. Make the long story short, they're pretty grabby, so we need to get on it. They wanna meet with John and Carl in the morning at eight o'clock, or eight, eight-thirty, right outside, right here in the corner. Let him show you what he showed me. He's got it laid out there with a, with a survey stop. As to where he wants to put everything that will allow us to go ahead and get it trenched, either with a ditch wedge or whatever you wanna use.
Right.
To get started, get out of their way before they catch up with you.
Only thing about that, what we're doing about our footers.
Well, he's gonna mark the footers.
The footers?
He's gonna mark them.
I know that, but how quick do we have to have? I talked to him down here at Builder's Supply the other day about olden sleeving for the footers, you know, cardboard sleeving. They said it, it, it takes about a week to get it. I don't know if we can get it chatted over or run and get it, or I forget, I was asking how fast it is.
We may have to go get it.
They did it fast.
Yeah.
They did it fast, and he's...
I'm not gonna read, man.
Here's, guys, what we...
Well, we're gonna find out how many we gotta have first.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, there's sixteen of them.
About sixteen, it's gotta be two foot? Didn't it say the footers had to be two foot?
The footers, yeah.
About thirteen-two foot up?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. Whenever we bid at the enhancement grant, it was a hundred and twenty thousand of them, and the Bellevins hadn't bid over it. And we said we would put in the conduit for the electrical work in the footers. So somehow, the, the reconstruction meeting, email to get sent, anyhow, we, that was left out. So this is what we're talking about, which will give the lining and the footers and does everything else included, right? While they're putting in the sidewalks, so we don't have to re-dig the ditch. So we'll be doing this, and that's the reason Carl and John are getting all this stuff together.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna have sidewalks before we know it.
They gotta do it.
Yeah, now, yeah, and, and that way we won't tear anything up, so that's what we...
So we're using their ditch?
We're using their ditch. We saved labor, Rusty, and we saved about a hundred thousand dollars on the grant by rebuilding it out, and Lev is doing it.
Add next big step.
So, and we talked about it a while back, but it's, now we're actually digging dirt, so that's a reason.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I've been, I've been saying...
It's, it's in his, Carl aware of it, uh, Lewis is aware of it, Tom Moore's aware of it.
All right, except, yeah. All right, John, anything else? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
All right, um, council, uh, you wanna start down here, and we'll work down here, because I know you have a couple things you wanna bring up, but I'm, I'm just gonna do that for now.
Uh, no, I thought it was the wrong way.
I, I mean, we can mention it, we can mention it, do you wanna...
Rusty, it's pretty turned out.
We'll start in here and work our way down. Do you want, where is it? Councillors?
No, I haven't, I haven't anything to add at the moment.
Allen? Lex? Yeah, but you gotta wait just a minute. Harry, you can go ahead, and then we're gonna touch a couple of things, get this business license and...
The only thing I want to mention, well, and I'll make this real quick. I believe we've already talked about it. We, Maryland's got some numbers, uh, before we were talking about the dump, and putting stickers in the cars for you to dump, so that we might end up with people in the city of Monique being able to dump their trash without having to go back and pull them away. Did we discuss this? Everybody here, what you talking about?
Yeah.
Uh, we moved a little further, uh, of course, we do have to come up with a commercial rate for Nunnly and Long, because they're bringing truckloads in. If you don't, then those people that didn't buy the stickers, they're not paying nothing except for travel fee. I mean, what I'm trying to say is, when you pay somebody in Holly, you're just paying the transportation of it, not garbage. And, uh, the numbers that Maryland got them, I didn't get them.
This, this is different. We ordered things from them before. It's around thirty-three hundred dollars for like three thousand stickers. But that's those clean-owned stickers that don't hurt anything. I thought it was high too, Alvin, but it was five thousand in another place and somewhere else. Of course, we, it's to, to give each person that lives, a resident, a sticker that says, and it could cost five dollars unless they're fixed incomes, what we talked about. When it's fine, Harry, what we said?
I think you can stop the commercial dumping and take care of the problem.
I don't know, because we're getting stuff from everywhere.
If you go out there, if you go out there and sit and dump, do thirty minutes, and see how many people don't live in Monique, or come in there and dump, you...
Well, I know, I've seen several, several.
Oh, yeah, you were there trying to go.
With commercial too.
But we know that, and we're letting them do it.
But we're not gonna let them do it, and we put their tickets in the cars, you ain't got a sticker, you don't dump, right?
That's what, I mean, we said, and if you can't afford it, you get your sticker if you live here.
And we have them.
But you don't get two, but we have to have, like, the clean, and that's your best of printing, you know, they're just a generic printing company. But it won't cost that much if you got two vehicles, you know.
And I can see it might be difficult for whoever's operating the dump to tell somebody, no, you can't do it, i- if there's no process by which you can limit it.
We will have a process, this one.
But this will set it up.
And, and I've checked, and it's, we're not, we don't want us doing it. She checked with the attorney, it's totally legal. The only thing that we have to do is set up some kind of a rate. I mean, you know, let's just say for instance, and, and I live at God's death, don't get me wrong. None that comes out there to dump, he's dumping people in Monique with garbage, more than likely. We don't know that for sure. But if he's dumping theirs, and there's fifty people on that truck that didn't pay for a sticker, and they don't have to, I just think that we need, and we gotta charge him more. You can't charge him ten dollars, you gotta charge him more. We've got a commercial rate, that's it. And after we put these stickers in their car, and they gotta come see the auto by them, and put them in their car, and some people, it's on a fixed rate, maybe we can help them. And, and I think the people in the town, and the ones I've talked to are tickled to death, because then they'll be able to go out there and dump and dump their garbage. You go out there, nanny's toilet, take water.
I mean, times if we passed in, I mean, all of us have had to bring it back, so we don't do anything any different than anybody else, but really, it is something for the people, and that's the only way we can control it.
I, I'm good with it, I just ain't good with charging, charging a commercial.
What are we doing in the way? Look what you're charging. Hey, is it over ten dollars? You go out there and know you can dump your garbage a year, a, a year?
Actually, see, guys, I've never, other, now, Steph, I'm gonna throw away, household garbage, I've never been turned away.
But you will be if you ain't get a sticker now. It's not this, that, and the other. If you go to Monique, then we advise this, you will.
All right.
I'll take it for Tracy.
Do we want to go ahead and deal with this tonight, or do we want to have, we wanna have rights and then deal with this at the next meeting?
I'd like to say a while.
Yeah, can we, can we table this? All right, let me ask you something. Let me ask you something before they toss out the heat, okay? Can we table this?
Yeah, let's go, David, because, I mean, probably be in the operation, ten dollars a year.
Before we move on.
It don't matter, it's a dollar, it's a principle.
Okay. Well, let me ask you something about a principle.
Yes.
And y'all clarify this, and I'm going to see that, I'm gonna talk to Butler and Carl about it, and, and we can, is that we do not allow building construction materials out there if it's the wrong stuff, correct?
Right.
If it is wooden, can we not burn it?
Well, I ask.
If it's cardboard, what do they do?
That's what my next question. Why can we not burn cardboard? What is wrong with burning cardboard?
Who stopped us from doing that?
Well, see, I asked the question, and somebody told me the other day, I said, no, that's not true. Let me check with the council, see if anybody told y'all this. I know I did.
I did.
And I'm gonna...
All I can tell you is that...
Well, but all, but my point is, I'm going to ask y'all here, I'm gonna tell them, if they can burn cardboard and building materials, do you want to go in there?
I burnt mine out there when I digged the box.
Is that all right with y'all? I mean, I'm not gonna cause EPA problem, but I went to confirm, nobody had told me.
As long as we're not burning tires or oil or plastic, we're okay.
So, and they can do that, and it will alleviate some of the problem, but we do not take major construction materials in our dumps.
No.
And so, and that's correct, and nobody told them they could.
Oh, yeah.
Because you did.
Good idea.
I thought you were stopping me. So what we will do, well, I'm gonna tell them, we'll do a memo, and y'all get a copy of it, yes, you can burn cardboard. And materials like this don't go in here, and if they're safe, you can burn them in that brush.
Sure.
Pressure-treated lumber, Alvin's correct, pressure-treated lumber should not be...
And then it shouldn't be left out there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a memo, we'll come out of the office, y'all get a copy of it via email, to where we know that they didn't say, because none of us did.
Right.
Okay. All right, now, here's bids, if you wanna send it down to, to your air conditioner, and with this, as y'all can tell, this one's broke, so we have three different bids.
It's broke.
And, you know, this section's broken, the air conditioner is, is in the building.
In the table?
All right, let me, let me just make one comment, and I'll be quiet, without names or anything else. You got one bid that includes all five-year part, parts warranty, compressor, heat exchanger, one year later. It's very clearly pointed out.
Mm-huh.
On the other two, there's no mention of any warranty of any kind. Not to say that they don't have it, but it is not mentioned on the proposal.
But in a bid process, we asked them to have everything here tonight, so we can do this, correct? Because you talked to one of them, didn't you? Did you talk to this one today, Tommy?
Yeah.
You talked to that one? That's what I'm saying, but you said you saw him earlier, and he was gonna get something?
Yeah.
And this one out here? He had the opportunity, so if we keep going back, we don't have time, so really, this is the one that has the warranty on, that's the one.
All right, and it ain't on here, but, uh, I'd already asked him about this, I don't know why he didn't put it on here, but it's a year on the labor and five years on the unit.
This is five, 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 and one.
And you could put five, 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 you'd wanna get that to honor it.
Well, this would be the only thing, you know, if you do the same thing, you could go right at, you know, so, so tell me what's...
They're both talking twelve-and-a-half ton units. One is a train, one is a crane, so if, if quality is, is saying five, 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 and one, although they don't have it on the bid, um, it, it looks like the, the other proposal, without saying the name, which I shouldn't have said the name in the first place, um, it's like the other proposal, although slightly cheaper, is about a thousand dollars less, and we're getting the same, same warranty. I saw that.
So...
But that one, I, I don't know. Well, I'm gonna say the same thing I done last time, I mean, I didn't do me no good then last time, but Randy Butler takes care of us, and I'm not bidding on the cheapest bid, I'm bidding on the best bid. I'll make a motion, we buy the one from Randy Butler, and that's, I'm into the name.
I will say this, no matter who does it, the gym in up here needs to be looked at, and they don't leave the building till they fix it off, because the duck working is not working. Whoever fixed this one, and they can tell you...
The duck work is not working?
Well, in one place, it's real hot, the next place, it's real cold. You know what I'm saying? So there's something going on, I guess you call it duck. The system it follows through, it's D-U-C-T, right?
The reason I'm gonna say that about Randy is every time I've ever called it, man, he came, and that's, that means a lot to me, it's, you're worth more than five dollars to know that he's gonna be here tomorrow morning. That's what I told you the last time.
The site is thirty-four hundred here. Yeah, there is thirty-four hundred dollars, but...
Thirty-four hundred dollars, I see eleven.
Well, he's done about marsh, he's, they're talking about marsh too, right? Because that's what you mentioned, the rest of them, you got...
Well, I made a motion, you might have seconded, I made a motion.
Do we hear a second?
I'm gonna tell y'all the same thing I did the last time. If you want Randy Butler, you can call him yourself.
Okay.
That's what I told you last time, I'm telling you again.
So, now we have still bids to get on the table. Do we hear anything? Do y'all wanna do something about this now, or you wanna table it?
I can't wait, because they're burning up in there.
So then, are we gonna declare it an emergency, and then we get to document what we did?
Make your motion on that Jeep, when we did that on the tractor too. Let's do it.
So...
All right, I build approval of V H Marsh, low bid eighty-four hundred dollars, based on the carrier twelve-and-a-half ton type of unit, gas-electric system. Complete with disposal of existing equipment, power and low voltage wiring, crane, rail, natural gas, and drainage piping. With the caveat that he adds onto his proposal, five-year parts warranty, five-year compressor, five-year heat exchanger, one year later.
I can nuke that.
Any discussion? We have a motion in a second. All right, roll call, bud. Rusty?
Aye.
Alvin?
Yes.
Lex?
Yeah.
You? Here?
No. There's someone else involved in a part of this curb, and I don't know if that could be people put in there, but it's devastating, all the kids, it don't matter.
Okay, I don't, like I said, I didn't know that about the air conditioners and the working, so let's...
Well, Lex, we know what the curb is, so...
Yeah, we will, then we need to make sure without it, it's not good, because if it doesn't have the warranty, then, all right, I'm gonna ask this question before we go any farther tonight. If he does not honor the same warranty, then we've got two bids, and we gotta do something. So I'm gonna redo it just one more time. What if the warranty's not the same?
If he doesn't honor the warranty, for the thousand dollars difference, I'd take hold of quality, um, as, as an alternative, and I'll make that as a, as a motion such, such that, um, if someone seconds it and we vote it, if the first one does not pan out, we can go immediately to the second.
And that means that Randy must include that on this too, so I'm just saying, if the warranty is not the same with these two, then Randy would be the second with his warranty there.
And then if that warranty is not there, then we fall on the third, and that's my motion.
Okay.
So we can get it done. Well, we took, and we took and voted one in, it ain't got no warranty on it, or it ain't entered.
Well, they said if the warranty's not in it, we're not even paying it. That was the caveat for this one. It will not be accepted without the warranty. That is on the other case.
So if he can't give us the five, 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 and one warranty, then we go to, go to Randy. If, if Randy can give us the five, 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 and one, then we go on the red. I'm just serious, I'm just, he takes care of us.
Okay. All right, so do we wanna redo that, since that we changed the, the motion, or you just want to, okay, everybody's good with that? Okay, so you've got that good, first two. All right.
Business license.
Harry, do you have anything else?
Yeah, we're moving.
Okay, um, Mountain Goat, Mountain Goat, as y'all know, we work ground, enhancement grant, we grow ground. Uh, we do have, and I'm gonna go through this quickly, uh, we do have a, uh, Employee Day is Friday. Uh, Labor Day Dance and Fireworks, it starts at six P.M. for Eric, Harry.
Yeah.
And that's on August the thirtieth.
February the ninth.
And the Chili Cook-off is now scheduled for October the fourth, is, wait, when's Chili Cook-off? That's what I said.
It's September.
October, eh?
September.
It's, I'm doing this thing, it's, it's, it's September, when? Twenty-seventh. Twenty-seventh, and the historical day, and the Mountain Homecoming, is October fourth. So it's at October fourth here, and I was reading instantly, so we'll have more, more about this thing, and Labor Day is, uh...
We have a question.
When is Labor Day? It's next Monday?
September one?
Yeah, right. So I'm sorry, it's just, you know, it's been a long day. So, uh, Employee Day, we do shut down home for employees, and y'all recall that, that's Friday, everybody come by, Priscilla is, is catering that. You know, as far as that, it goes to what, about five then?
Yeah, we have to make a motion, close to the end.
Okay, well, we, it was standing before, but we can do it again. I mean, that's what we approved the day in the budget, so if we wanna do it again, you're welcome to.
If in fact we do, I'm gonna make a motion, we're close to the holiday.
No, we don't need it.
Okay, but everybody's aware that it's a standing event, so if that's what you wanna do, Terry, I wanna have your word.
We're good.
Okay. We have one business license, where's the ones that Earl gives? This is a permanent business, it has been checked, right? All right, Tiberry checking it. We now have, come on up. Jason. This is Mount Jason with Archery, not Archery, Mount Archery, now he's Mountain Graphics. So, he's Mountain Graphics, he is now moving in the location where was this, one of, one of the realty used to be. So, he's now doing there, doing his graphics, banners, artworks, t-shirts, you name it, you name it, right? Bottom. So, everything, the end of the building that Carter and him have.
Sure, they had that realty, I'm saying. To make it long story short, I make a motion, we approve his license.
So, you guys... You can hurry and get your stuff.
So, I forgot some other things, we'll check with you about two ones if you got some. Clean guns, you know.
Well, yeah, especially the best of the previous time about the dump.
Well, see, what I was saying...
I put a forty and all that, so...
Well, see, that's what I was saying, I asked him while that, he was too busy. So, now that we got a business, we can do... We have a motion in a second, is everybody in favor or?
Yes.
Ah.
Who made the motion? Lex, was it second major?
No, Harry made the motion. I made the motion.
Oh, Harry made the motion, Lex second. So, you have it, we'll get you the information, but they're cling on, is there cling on?
They're clings.
Clings, you know what I'm talking about, it's cling on, it's starting.
I made a motion with Germany.
No, wait, we have a few more things today.
Don't we wanna say something about this letter right here?
Uh, we ain't done yet, that's what I'm saying. All right, transparent. Now, we have an announcement. The town of Montego and the city recorder's office received a national award on accounting. A lot of y'all know what that means. We will have, since we were having groundbreakings in progress, the city recorder's office, though we've worked with auditors and CPAs and this council, and the comptroller, he likes us, but we received a national award. And they'll give us their numbers and their stats, and we will do a program. But this is how, where's the letter, do you have? Is that it?
Yeah.
From a recording to management to financial statements to government finance statements to funding to govern, the government financial statements, to the summary of accounting policies, to notes and disclosure, to the pensions, to requirement supplementary, uh, information, and I'm losing, and to every section. We got an outstanding award, folks. This is what progress does, and transparency. We make mistakes, but it's about the people. And so, but... You know, Ernie, you shoot that one real good. And Rusty, since we had the employee dinner, which we did have, five of our employees and their spouses that we honored last week, and of course, that was fifteen to thirty-one years. Since we had groundbreakings today too, we will schedule something to this, and there'll be press materials and stuff coming out. But this is what we've been working on, folks, and it is y'all, you know, so... And this, I mean, has received in the state of Tennessee or in the state, very few people and no small towns received it, I can think of. But that's really about y'all. And here's proof. So, now, do y'all want to adjourn?
I made a motion.
That's the letter, that was it.
Yeah, but this is for Debbie.
Oh, well, this is...
This is not the national award, this is the award that Debbie was presenting, was it not?
No, it was to the office.
To the office, okay.
Yeah, see, it's to the office, she got one and we got one. You know what I'm saying? The office got one here, Rusty.
Okay, all right, so Big Cheese doesn't get it all by herself.
No, no, that's for the office. See, that's the, we have her marking, I love them working together to get it there, so...
I, I got you. When I saw Debbie's name, I thought she was getting paid center of attention.
Well, she is too.
Two years in a row, she gets her picture on the...
But no, that's what it was with, where CPAs, with their auditor, with the, with the system we set up at Deb's office and the town, making it all work together.
Got you.
So...
And I think Mary's motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Good deal. Now, we're...
Three down.
Yeah.